Presented the minutes from the Thursday, January 30th, 2025 meeting were read. Commissioner Larson made a motion to approve the minutes. Commissioner Stone seconded motion, motion carried. Expenditures for the following offices were approved to be paid. County payroll, certific clerk, employee benefits, prosecuting attorney, general county government administrative handling cost line, jury pay, emergency management chair, county clerk Rosebridge, victim advocate, tri-county child support, prosecuting attorney, village grounds, and inmate security. Assistant Scott Lawrenge presented engagement letter between the county and Sigmund Browning of Jefferson City to represent his office in appeal from Buckstall Marine to the state tax commission. He shared that he has met with the Eastville School District for financial support as they would have the most benefit from the ruling. Scott explained, Scott explained. I'm gonna scratch out shared now. That the appeal was due to the taxpayer, due to.
That, that the appeal was due to the taxpayer and did not believe he owed the taxes.
I need to rewrite that. Did not believe they owed taxes as land is exempt due it, due to it being on core property. Scott states that the improvements to the land is not tax exempt. After reviewed, Commissioner Larson made a motion to contract with Sigmund Browning for representation for the appeal. Commissioner Stone seconded the motion, the motion passed with a roll call vote of yes, absent yes. Scott and the emergency management director Mark Harden shared information on numerous chicken barns getting built in the Osage Township and Windsor Township area. Commissioner Larson stated that the barns in the Windsor Township area may have some problems as the acreage requirement for the barn isn't sufficient for its size as an acreage of the farm has to be continuous, not separated by another owner. The abstracted fees collected by the recorded deeds office for the month of January was reviewed and approved. Jim Sublet with the emergency management office submitted information regarding the weather on January 25th, the day that the Missouri DNR took samples at the Davis School District. Jim stated that the average ground temperature up to four inches deep was 29 degrees. Actually, you said that in your, no Jim said that.
Jim said that.
Commissioner Larson shared that he had heard results from testing can be affected by the weather. Mark Harden shared that the EPA compliance officer for our, for our area is Carson Colatier? Is that how you say his name?
Yes.
Colatier from Kansas City. He shared that he had attended a Zoom meeting with Carson and was told that the county is high on their list due to the numerous calls they are receiving from citizens. He also shared that the EPA is now requiring Evergy to now complete tier four testing versus the tier three that they have been doing. Mark shared that the Missouri Department of Natural Resources testing at the Davis School came back all numbers within EPA guidelines except for the arsenic numbers. Mark shared that Everbridge is now up and running and able to send emergency communications. Commissioner Stone shared of a conversation he had with Ken Scott and I, one director. Ken had shared that they may need, may not be able to complete their work at the former emergency management building until May and asked the commission to not deed the property until they get their work completed. Dennis Star, supervisor requested that Commissioner Larson, and he drive the roads in Fields Creek Township as a board member of the township, stated that the roads were fine, but he believes there's a lot of problems that need to be corrected. Dennis shared the bridge inspections began yesterday. He shared the bridge inspection schedule. Dennis stated the new mower max training is occurring today. The crew plans on going to, going out to Fields Creek Township after to blow up, to file roads. The group had discussion on purchasing a road grader. Commissioner Larson asked if the budget would allow for the county to purchase a new or used grader. Clerk Rick suggested that the commission try to purchase a grader from one of the townships. He stated that there are 10 or more graders out there with fewer operators. He shared that an agreement of some kind may be made that the county would be able to take over the payments of the, of the grader and guarantee a certain number of hours a month to be used within their township for a prolonged period of time. Dennis shared that he would like to bid out for a new tractor in preparation for mowing season. Commission agreed. The commission signed the petition in support of Stonebridge Common Sewer District. The commission signed a letter to be sent to the neighboring commissioners as well as the commissioners of counties within the Truman Lake area. The letter was in regards to potential contamination around the Montrose Power Plant area. Jesse Phillips went with the commission to inquire about the senior tax freeze. Commissioner Stone shared that they are reviewing what authority they have to freeze taxes of other public entities. He also shared that the taxes increased from recent years have been minimal. Commissioner Larson stated he would give back to Mr. Phillips. The group had more discussion. Clerk Rick distributed bid specs for the solicitation of testing firms. The group discussed the bidding out process. Commissioner Larson stated that he did not want there to be any appearance of colluding with Evergy, the Department of Natural Resources, or the EPA. He also stated that he does not want the firm to be publicized. Clerk Rick explained that the signed contract with the firm would be a public document as well as the information of the bids received. He also stated that the information would be public even if it were signed in a closed session after a certain period of time. He stated that even closed sessions regarding personnel had, must be disclosed after three days. I'm trying to remember what you said, must be disclosed, or must be available, let's just say that. The commission received a call from Matt Coley with Socket Telecom. Matt solicited the commission to sign a letter of support for Socket Telecom's efforts to expand broadband in the rural areas of the county. It was requested that Matt submit maps and supporting documentation of their plans for the county. At 11:04, Commissioner Larson made a motion to adjourn meeting. Commissioner Stone seconded motion, motion carried with the roll call vote of yes, absent yes. And there's a few of those. Unfortunately, one on each page.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion made to approve the minutes, I'll second that. Much better made second, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. With the correction.
All right, just have a few bills. I sent a reply to you guys from one of the three testing firms.
Yep.
That they do not, don't have the capacity to do that. But he recommended the testing firm in.
Take lab, take lab.
You want me to send, contact them?
I would.
Okay.
Well, that may be a big one.
I'm gonna run downstairs real quick, fix these minutes, and then I'll have another thing for you guys to sign. Be right back.
Wonder if McCrish is busy back. Mark, we'll try to talk to her. Talk to God, catch her. See if that'd work over there, that garage.
Oh, yes.
Besides, she just had a key in. You know what? We wouldn't have to worry about, we need those, that's that. That'd be better than going to the storage unit somewhere. Rent one for the, over there at the merge manager, you know, the garage over there?
Right.
And there used to be an evidence room, and nobody really used it, but if we could put everything in there, McCrish would be happy, she'd have her own.
Own little area, yeah.
And it's no different than putting the storage unit somewhere, that's.
Right.
It's dry.
Yep.
It's empty. It's almost as empty as this room, so there's plenty of storage.
But we're gonna need that other for a while, well, we'll keep it for the generator.
Yeah.
That'd be good.
But that, that one end is completely empty.
Yeah, and that's where you used to have the evidence, yeah. I'll never forget cleaning out that little building. It was stuff back there before, before Ken's days. Uniforms.
If they were securing that for evidence in the 50s, it'll be secured under court records.
Should be, should be.
Oh, I saw your thumbnail, it was the best. It was Scott getting the donut.
Well, somebody bought, bought coffee. Just didn't make its way up there. I don't know, but they bought $141 worth of coffee.
Whoa.
Have you seen any of it floating around? Hello, Mark, do you wanna chime in any, or you turned around?
No, I lost my phone.
You want me to call you?
No.
Well, how you gonna find it? That's a merge manager director there. Did you hear what I said?
Yeah.
Have you seen any flow, coffee floating around?
I don't know. Do I?
Ooh, and suddenly I might find out what department here. Sheriff's Office, gosh, wait till I see her.
I'm wondering.
How's he get, I'm asking how he got his damn coffee, just ordered it self, that's. You know what, I'm gonna have, we need to have our own requisition up here. We'll send it in, just send in the bill, that's clear.
I sent them that picture. He sent me that. That was a good thumbnail.
That's pretty close.
I'm like, $141 for coffee, I'm gonna have to get on subby.
Well, I think Sheriff probably use a lot of coffee. You know what, I bet they do.
Well, I bet they do.
Well, I did buy a thing of coffee, one thing. For the, for the conference.
Conference.
How much was that?
$14.
Did you use all?
No, that's why I said, we've got two cans. Bought one thing of coffee and four cases of water.
Hot chocolate I can do, coffee no.
On the Textcaster, now are we changing that?
You shouldn't be paying for Textcasters anymore. Textcasters should be gone.
Well, we're paying now $14.52 dues and subscriptions.
Shouldn't be paying that anymore, where are you at with Everbridge?
That's what I'm asking.
I'll get with the sheriff.
Yeah.
Cause that's in his, that comes out of his budget.
Yeah, that's where he, he go and pay it. Check, could you?
Yep.
I don't know if the firm comes in to deal with us.
And that might have been till last month, since we just started, we just officially.
Finishing it up, I hope.
We just officially rolled out to the Everbridge on the first.
Mark?
Mm-hmm.
How was your road trip last week? Dennis taking you out?
It was rough.
Huh?
It was rough.
Rough, oh.
The road, I mean like, rough, rough. Bad, bad.
I mean, you couldn't go 20 yards and you'd hit everywhere.
Chuggles.
Yeah, yeah. The whole road needs to be graded, except for in front of, there's a stretch that's actually pretty good, it's got plenty of gravel on it that goes to the highway, but yeah. They've got an election coming up, I thought, I think, so, but. It's a shame we don't have more control over that, you know?
I'm sorry, that's just, that's what I'm.
I know, I know, but it is, it's a shame, cause it's.
You wouldn't think anybody would be, they do.
No, no.
Anyway, I guess something's.
But yeah, I mean, we were in his truck and he was, he was probably going, I don't know, 20? And you knew it, you knew it.
Well.
And I, and the thing, I mean, I get it, this time of the year, you're, you're gonna get some of that.
In our, their defense, just like right now, out of my road, we've got two places, of course, there ain't any gravel left, hardly.
Right.
But with all that ice that we had and all of us staying on the road, then when it melts, goes all straight down, then your base, and then all of a sudden you have these big chuggles, no way to fix them, just get them dug out, put gravel back in.
And where, where Dennis took that box blade, cause I asked him, I said, would you make about four or five passes across this? Cause he, he, he cut some of it out, but you still.
Like that much getting them out?
Yeah.
See, in, in order to get chuggles, you cut the blade out.
You gotta, yeah, it takes forever.
Then come back in, pack it in.
Yeah, yeah, but there's no gravel, I mean, there's no gravel there and until, like I said, you get around the corner.
See, we have, we have that, just like ours, there's a couple places on the road that just, none of the road, but I, that's just township form again.
Between my house and the highway, you probably saw it this morning, there was a place like that, but it was, all the water was coming down and then it got ice and it took forever for it to go out. And I was driving over it and I was laughing, cause I know, I mean, Mike takes care of all that stuff. I woke up this morning, it was already fixed, so he, he's out doing it, but.
Yeah, it's a, but it's a problem.
Yeah.
And I, I don't know.
My road's great. No problems whatsoever, since you're our asking.
Probably, he lives on the Black Dog. State. Smart of that. This way he is. Now, where are you leaving exactly, Mark?
On double O.
Double O.
Yeah, a mile and 52.
They just paved yours last, last year?
They, they pave bits and pieces every year.
Yeah, yeah.
They'll do 100 foot here and 100 foot there.
It's 10 times better than it was then.
Yeah.
I mean, I know out in front of Kevin's house, man, you get, you'd lose a car.
Well, you can go out.
One of these days they just do the big tape, the whole thing from end to end, instead of doing little piece here and little piece there.
It seems like it'd be more economical, you know? Cause by the time they get to the one other piece, piece they did three years before is falling out.
Well, I know Debbie out there, that's, that's a problem out there too.
They went through, when we went down like at those chicken houses and stuff, on Z Highway, the state moved it in place forwards. Break your teeth though.
Yeah, some of them are pretty bad. I'm kinda, I gotta tell you, I'm surprised, of course it's city, but Van Sant. I mean, that's like one of the nicest roads, nicest areas in Clinton, and in my truck, it'd beat you to death.
Van Sant, I would see, part of that's ours too.
Really?
Really, and I've always said, that shouldn't ever happen.
Well, no.
But that's when, when it's talking about this other, when they're talking about doing roads and just like out here, that's why I was concerned. I didn't want that to get slipped into city limits.
Right.
And turn around, we have to maintain, that's what happened over there, years ago. And how that ever happened, I'll never know, because the commission shouldn't have ever.
We should never take.
Because the road, you need, if it's gonna be in the city limits, it needs to be there.
Yeah, we shouldn't take any paved roads at all, cause there's no way to maintain them.
They're in front of the Vincent Center, wow, that, that's.
Oh, yeah, that'd beat you to death.
They're in front of what?
The Vincent Center.
Yeah, but see, that's highway there.
All your visitors come to town and then they gotta drive on that.
That's 52 though, that's state.
Yeah. They could do theirself a whole lot of, better off if they'd make it to where, whatever access coming in to Clinton, when you lose your teeth coming in, that's kinda one of those, hmm.
One of your Vincent Centers where they held all your events and everything.
Yeah, yeah.
People gotta drive on that.
Yeah.
All right, talk about that. And approved. What I did is the first change was by the middle hole punch. Scott explained the appeal was due to the taxpayer's belief that it did not owe taxes as the land is exempt, so I changed that in the back page. Third paragraph up, last line, he stated that even closed sessions regarding personnel must be available after three days. This is a letter from MoDOT. Here is a notice award meaning that you guys selected Mira Excavating to do that bridge.
Yep.
And you guys have already voted, I just need signatures. Dick is gonna come in later today to sign a couple things for me.
I'm gonna see the final, we got, and then we put, Mark, he's on Quad Lakes, isn't he? Mark, what'd they say? I mean, you're supposed to be on there, Shannon, I, I sent a deal to him, said, hey, you're already, I thought we already got you on there, cause that'd weigh all three of us feet on that, that way going to the board.
I've got a meeting with Ju- Julie In- In- Ingrman?
Ingrman?
Yeah, uh, February something.
Is that Quad Lakes?
Yeah, West Central.
West Central, that's a different one now, it's a different one. But that is, hey, it's important for you to go to that one, cause that's, that'll be all the West Central, the commissioners at different places, like saying clerk county and all that.
Yeah.
I like to have one and I, really, I was on one year or two years and then we need to get separate. You can't, I don't want everybody in one spot.
Yeah, she's, she's gonna come out to the office and explain everything. The first meeting is the day that we're down at, at conference.
Yeah, yeah, cause that's, see, I'm supposed to go to Jeff's city that day and I had to, I told him I just couldn't help, cause that's our first day. And then I have a, I have, in fact, I got a CLIO meeting, it's Chief of Electric Officials, that we usually meet today, but we're gonna meet at C-CAM down there and we're gonna meet 1:00, we're gonna have early and get it done. Even though one year they kinda ninged us for doing that, said you can't do that on the other, but the slide's true, I think long as we do it ahead of time, before it actually starts, then we're all right. Wheatley's in charge of that one, so we'll see how that goes.
When is that conference?
Uh, what time?
When is that conference?
26, 27, 28. You know it? That's what I thought.
Mm-hmm.
My wife's birthday is 27th, I worried her about that too. That isn't good. And Richard's 24th, so, same, have to have her and Richard, forget it. Then the girls, they decided it's gonna, they'll just come down, of course, that costs me anyway. When they come down, they usually, well, then take them. So.
So the sheriff's office is still using the Textcaster?
I just, I just talked to him about it, we, and he's gonna get with Aaron on that, because I said, hey, we shouldn't be paying. Then I was gonna raise a cane about the coffee, $141 coffee.
You did get over it, your coffee did.
Oh, hey, well, we, we just paid him bill for $141 for coffee.
That's sheriff's office, yes. I bet you they.
He tried to blame me on B.
I did, I looked at him, cause he said, the day, he had two or three of them big jugs.
I do have some coffee if you don't need some.
Where do you get those big?
Saints.
That's where, that's where I always pick up candy and meth, a few of the sands are. And used to, I went to Kansas City once a week, and then Jeff started picking up doors. And we don't go up as much, most have shipped in now, so I don't get up there. But still, I bookkeeper up there, I have to go up. Anyway. The jet comes back, then we pull pots of coffee, then, yeah, Rick. Are you up back on it a little bit?
This is the first cup I've had in a week, so, trying to get back. All right, got that. Remember that call you got from Socket?
Yes, yeah.
This is from a different company.
It's not the same.
The one that I had talked to, and I had requested that he send maps and documentation. His, they're, Shawnee Tell is the name of their company.
Shawnee Tell.
They're trying to get that grantee, but that is the email correspondence and the map that he sent me. So if you guys want to send.
Yurik and Calhoun, Deepwater. Look, Calhoun, they don't have, I think Yurik and them would have, oh, St. Valen too. But of course, these are all, if they do, it doesn't matter, yes.
Yeah, they're just all trying to get federal.
Yeah, they're wafting federal money, I'm sure looking for it. That may dry up.
Deadline coming up, cause all those companies are calling and trying to get just a letter of support. They don't want money, I mean, they do want money, but they don't, they certainly want our money.
They don't want county money.
They don't, they just want a letter of support.
Since dang hard money's gone, then that's kinda wasted, that's gone. Yeah. They're gonna have 78 thou, no, that's what they've got. Cause we got. What's the other one, the one up there that we just signed?
That was with Brightspeed.
Brightspeed. I'm worried about Brightspeed, cause if they have to use their own lines, they're in trouble. Most of them are on the ground.
They're in the trees.
Huh?
They're in the trees.
Yeah.
It's right there.
That's the best way to do it, you try to decree one of the poles.
What do you have, you're in Calhoun, aren't you?
Yeah, we got Brightspeed.
You have Brightspeed?
We're on Brightspeed. We have Armani's, yeah. Oh, gosh. What's this there like, uh?
Dur- Dur- AT&T?
Elon's.
Oh, Starlight, that's what I've got, the Starlight.
You like it?
I love it, I love it, it's fast. It's, it's a little more money, but it's well worked.
Now, how much shit costs a month?
One ninety?
One ninety.
I haven't had, we haven't had any issues at all.
Even all that ice we have, that, that had gears on them.
Yep.
Built into.
So they send you the stuff and you actually have to hook it yourself?
I had, I don't, that I don't know, but I have our IT guy do it, so, he may have somebody that comes up and does it.
What's, uh, which?
I mean, it doesn't matter to me, I guess, I, I honestly don't care. That's what, the more people that are doing, I guess. That's what, the more people that are doing, I guess, I guess my question is. I was out at Blairstown, and I, and I get, you know, I understand all of that, but there was a guy that told me that they brought fiber up right to the edge and then stopped. And I'm like, why not hit some of these, so you know, I, let's get everybody.
Years ago, spec, they got millions of dollars to do a bunch of work. And that was going down a U highway out there, I guess a U and, and C. And they rolled the ground, they rolled the cable out and just laid it on the ground, that was it, never did do anything.
Yeah.
I went to the money and that was all. But anyway. I don't know what good it's gonna do.
Well, that's.
Uh to me, because you gotta connect somehow.
Right.
And you got a little spot over in Yurik and Calhoun. Deepwater's a bigger spot. I guess uh, whoa, what's the mayor down there, she, I know she's been for it. Uh what is her name?
Something Meister.
Huh?
Last name's some, uh, some.
I realize, I mean, she's not still down.
Her sister lives over by you, Sue Lesmeister.
Oh, Lesmeisters, yeah.
Sue Lesmeister.
Anyway, she's, she's.
Their sister's?
Real nice. Anyway, we need, and nothing, we tried it, we're trying to meet with all the cities around once every quarter. Invite them in, and tell them, or find out what's going on at their deals. Not much we can do, and that's valid, but anyway, you know that, I'm telling you, that's the next, some of the things that come out with, but anyway, whatever we want.
If you want it, does that get you that, you want to, cause I'll draft a, this is what you did for Bright Speed, and they have one too, so I'll get it, put together for the guys.
We don't need voting on that right now, but.
I don't think you have to vote, it's just a letter.
Just a letter of support, it's all.
Uh the next thing I have for you is, um, I don't know if you know, Harding brought on past.
Harding might.
And he was a board member for Clinton Township.
Yeah.
They brought in this letter, they're requesting that you appoint Bob Parks to be the board member, he's no longer an employee of Township.
Oh, he's off of that?
Yeah. So there, that term would end in April. Because the new terms for all the townships begin.
Let's see, that'd be, actually, it's Jake's, isn't it?
It would be Jake's.
Should we put it off, tell Jake?
He'll be here Tuesday.
I don't wanna do anything, step it down, he said, what if he doing like?
Right, right, exactly.
Cause I feel like that's his responsibility there. Let's hold that up, let's see. They say, they can say, hey, we were waiting for Jake to come in.
Corinne Lesmeister.
Yep, Corinne, that's what I was trying to think of her name.
So they'd be sister-in-laws?
Sister-in-law.
Okay.
Yeah, because, yeah.
They do kinda look alike. They're sister-in-laws, and maybe they are sisters.
Well, she kept on telling me, her sister, every time you go out there, she's going to her sister's.
Yeah, she's actually right behind me, behind the creek, little creek there.
That is really all I have for you guys. We've been busy working on audit, and then all the other, all the offices have been.
I got mine sent in, you get yours sent in?
Yes, yesterday, actually.
You mailed it in?
Yep, I mailed it.
They've requested uh sample payrolls that we've done over the past two years, and sample bills that we paid, and they're gonna review, I think, just about every bill we paid through the ARPA money, so.
Yeah, oh, they will, they.
They're gonna hit that for the ARPA.
We got everything here then.
Things are progressing pretty well with that, we're keeping up with their requests, so.
Okay. Well, I guess Benton, he got mailed in there.
Yeah, Benton County, they had a state audit.
Yeah.
The difference between the financial audit is, is it's an independent company like we're doing now, they, they just do our, uh, financial stuff. When the state come in, they do a procedure audit, and they make sure that uh we're charging the correct taxes according to what the townships or everybody has signed.
Signed up.
They're making sure um everything, they, they check everything's.
Lot more in depth.
That's where, that's where, we have stamped it, used to, just stamp it, that was good. They come in and said, you stamped your initial. And then to keep that locked up.
Keep it locked up, yeah.
Don't ever let it, really use it. There, there's, they're a little serious about everything, even though there's some things that got by them, uh, just like.
There's always discrepancies between audit companies, so one auditor says that you don't have to do it this way, and then the next one comes and says you do, and you guys are supposed to know.
Got two different opinions.
Did you hear, did they go back to school?
I think they're moving back next week.
They are going to?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk with Karen and make sure.
I wonder if Dennis checked with Cooks, it's getting time of the year, they may have, see, last time we bought it, bought it, that big tractor, the four with the, we, Cooks had one that came in from like at least the old, they had ended up with. And we bought that, still have warranty and everything on it, a lot less hours. We bought it worth a lot, a lot of fast nins, we did, with John Cook and they'd like sell it and everything, they were sure work with you, and try to get it. We bought that, still have warranty and everything on it, a lot less hours. We bought it worth a lot, a lot of fast nins, we did, with John Cook and they'd like sell it and everything, they were sure work with you, and try to get it. Cause buying a new one, even though you got state that don't, amount, it's a lot of bucks.
Have you guys talked about, I hope, what you want to do, change the car contracts, cause we need to get those mailed out here.
Yeah. Don't ask him why it was inspection.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe it could be a bad time.
Well, you know, that ice and snow we had, just really poured around us.
Yeah, yeah.
That's probably what done it all.
Gotta grade them though, you can't just throw gravel on them. Man, that, you know, and that's the thing, because like I, like I said, with what happened with us.
Yeah, yeah.
I hate uh putting somebody in a box if they don't need to be. But in saying that, there's a lot of other ones that actually need to be. I just wish there was a, a workaround, you know what I'm saying, and I, I, that's.
That's the hardest part.
Yeah, that's what I've been trying to figure out.
You, you, when you do for one, I guarantee you, that'll come back and say, well, you just done that one case. It's kinda like, kinda like Charlie Kidler, what Donnie Boy was doing. Now, tell what's happened over that over the years, that's caused four headaches had over a, a deal just to shut them up, just be nice and get it done. That is all, guess what, and then it comes back to haunt you.
Well, it haunts, it haunts the next group of commissioners as well.
That's right, that's right, I mean, that's, you gotta remember, uh, somebody's gonna have to take over.
Somebody's coming behind you.
And you're, what you set is what you gotta deal with.
Right, right.
And we got a road agreement, I think, and I think that's pretty well standard, even though we should, we had a little water reasons everywhere, but we've got stuff, it's only up thirty foot east, it's not good, but it's old county. But anyway, the whole deal, and what y'all do with car rock, I don't know. Uh years ago, the biggest thing, change we did was to change it to where my miles, how many miles in that township to get their car done.
Right.
And that regulate a lot, cause back then, some of them didn't have, they didn't have miles to even fill the car. But whatever changes y'all need to make, we need to sign y'all's, and I want y'all to work on that, and that, I usually, that's y'all's responsibility, it's, it's tough, I know already tell you. Cause I, when Tally was, he was laid up for a while, couldn't do it, uh, never got to deal with him. I'm fine, ain't it?
Ordered them over, it's where I'm done. Chuck Kaiser.
Jim Self.
Mr. Jim, I think I met you a year ago.
Yes, yes.
Mark Larson.
Mark Larson, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
How you doing today?
I'm doing well, sir, I just wanna stop in and say hi. And uh.
Thank you.
I've been reading your notes, and I know y'all interested possibly in the motor grader. So I did price one out, I don't know how serious you are, just might have been, and then Dennis said possibly even a, like a road maintainer, a road groomer. So I priced both of them out in here.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, I wanted to have some more literature on the road groomer. If I can get an email address, I can send it, or if I, can I send it to yours, I have your email.
Send you a boot it out, too.
But uh, we actually just sold one of these to Cass County. And it's uh.
Is that the groomer?
That's the groomer.
Yeah.
It's uh.
We're seeing one.
The little difference in this one versus what a lot of them is, is it sits on a, a wheelbase, it's hydraulically drops down. So that one's including a hydraulic motor, so you run it behind a pickup truck, you can't hook it to a tractor. But we demoed that far and made some adjustments based on how the demo went, and it, it went pretty well. Uh we just brought them into Kansas City, we've been selling out of our Wichita branch for a while now. And I'll send you the literature on that. And then this is a, that's a, yeah, grader there. And that's a six seventy, which is what, that's a pretty popular size for the area. Includes warranty, we put some parts warranty on it as well. And then it also includes uh, one more page here. Eight thousand dollars in parts and service credit. So a big push they're making with the graders right now is they went to our parts and service department and said, how can you help us, you know, incentivize this deal? So they poured some money out of those departments and put them into our.
Is this the one with the joysticks?
No, it is antlers. Yeah, would y'all prefer joysticks?
Oh, hey, I don't know anything about.
I, I typically price antlers because operators are hard to find.
Yeah.
And most anybody can jump in and operate the antler racks. I- if you get further along and wanna price joysticks, I can definitely bring something like that back.
I'm just, I.
No, you're.
I knew about them, that's the reason.
Yeah. Uh joysticks a little more advanced, there's a little more to them, there's a lot more things they can do. It's just to find somebody to operate them out in these townships. And, and some of these rural counties where uh most of them prefer antlers, which also are a little cheaper. So, uh, but I just wanted to drop that by and just, and get that to y'all. Also, I've been reading y'all notes from your last minute, I appreciate you putting the notes online, by the way. Uh operator training was brought up, so I'll look into that. I don't know what deer offers. I'm, I'm too new to, I'm, I'm a year in, so you don't want me training your guys. But uh, but we also have a simulator, and I need to see how good that is for training. So it may be something uh that we could bring up to the county barn, there, get with Dennis and schedule it to be there for maybe a couple week period. And, and walk y'all through using it, and you know, get a few people in there on it, so they can teach everybody, but it's, it'll basically grade you out, I mean, it's used in schools. Where you can set up a course and, and you can grade that course, and it'll, it'll grade you on how you did. We have an uh excavator one here, the grader one's up in Ohio, so I have to see if they'll be able to move it and such, but. That's better, it's, it's pretty nice, cause you, we use it to, to schools, teach kids and stuff, so. But just wanted to bring that to y'all attention, that we'll, we'll look at some of that.
That'd be something, I think it'd be a real good deal.
Bates was also asking, Mr. Jim and them over there.
Oh, yeah, we weeded?
Yeah. So possibility we can, you know, either work a trainer or.
Yeah, that would work out good.
You know, how do you get people to show up, well, you know, maybe we sponsor a meal. Cause people show up to eat.
If you're gonna get a crowd, that usually is the best way.
Yeah, they won't show up to train, but they'll show up to eat, so. Possibility, I'll look into some of that and get back to y'all, let you know. What we can come up with, just really want to stop in and say hi and drop that off and. Is it Mike at Winston, Special Road District?
Mike Burgs.
Okay, Winston. We're gonna do, we're gonna demo that uh groomer in April for him.
Yeah, yeah.
I've seen them, they, actually, there's some good, some good places for them.
Yeah, and it worked great, it's just, I, I, Mike struggled with it, his cast is like, they wanna do away with the motor grader and replace it, it's like, no, this isn't, this is not a replacement, it's, it's a supplement. But in some of these townships that, you know, might not have the hours to run the motor grader as much, and you wanna keep that road a little better. And the fact you hook it up to a one ton pickup.
We had one of those uh last year. Anyway, they, they tried one, they're just, they demo it, I forgot who it was, with this pulling on a pickup.
Yeah.
I forgot that.
So, we did the demo the other day in Cass behind a tractor, because the demo unit I had doesn't have hydraulics on it, but it uh.
How'd the tractor work?
Tractor worked great.
Better than a tr- a truck?
I don't know if it's any better, because you're. You're not adjusting, you're basically just setting it on your road and pulling, and at the end of your road, you're picking up to, to grade it out, let the material out. So you're not, now, we're looking at a, uh, the rear level bar, there's another one they make that's adjustable. And you have to run a tractor, but the, the benefit of that is, as you, it levels it, and you can adjust it up, down, you can, you can run a slow. You can drop, if you load up material, yeah, you can drop it. Uh on the go, where that current unit gets all manual.
It's gonna be flat.
Yeah, you gotta go back there and set, like we said, he is with a, you know, a, a one inch here and a half inch there. Stay a little higher on the, on the inside, so you'll better do all that uh with this other unit we, we quoting them right now. The whole back is, is all, is hydraulics, so. But it, it was, it was my first time seeing it, we brought it in from Wichita, and it was pretty impressive. Probably the biggest difference is over the competition is, like the one we bid against, you had to add a thousand pound of weight to theirs. Ours is twenty-two hundred pounds as it sits, so.
Weight anyway?
Yeah, it's thirty-one hundred pounds, but it's twenty-two hundred on the, on the.
Weight.
That, that you dropping down, the frame. So the rest of it's in the, the wheelbase and the hubs. So. But uh, definitely anything we can do for y'all, just let us know, and I've been dealing with Dennis, but time to time, I'll stop in and say hi.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Like y'all having fun right now with, what I'd call it, fun, uh.
Challenges.
Challenges, challenges of public office.
Yeah.
It was nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, Mr. Mark.
Good seeing you.
Appreciate it.
Y'all be down, C-CAM?
Y'all be at C-CAM, and uh open invitation, we're be, we're gonna have a hospitality of the first night. Second night, if anybody wants to jump in and go to dinner, we'll probably go down to J.B. Hooks or something. So, I know the Cass County guys have already signed up. But uh, just reach out, you got my number, let me know. Appreciate y'all's time.
Okay, take care.
Wow, that dude's traveled fast.
Hey, guess what, Chuck? What a good dinner, there, there you go, J.B. Hooks down there, it's a good place to eat.
Yeah, it is.
What's the price going on that, did he give you a price?
Three hundred and.
Well, yeah, one was three forty-seven.
I think it's three forty-seven. I think it's three forty-seven for that road grader.
There's your supper.
Yeah. Hey, you know what? Every year we've been down there, and, well, Rick and them, we never was invited. Of course, never really talked to them about it, but road graders is big things they like to. But anyway, I know, cause we bought that, uh, wasn't we bought from them big? But nobody really talked to us. We never, never did. We, the Great Rivers, they use a one of a sack.
That other deal.
Yeah, three hundred and forty-seven.
The other one's twenty-nine thousand?
Yeah, that's a road grader. I can see where that thirty-two hundred would be a lot better on the road.
Well, I was gonna say, that'd be, you could buy a whole lot of those before you had to buy a road grader.
Twenty-nine thousand.
Yeah.
That's what.
I mean, and as long as you stayed on top of it.
Pull behind three-quarter ton.
If you stayed on top of it and didn't let it get to the point where you needed a road grader.
Well, that's what you got. The only thing is, just like this crown business, you wanna get a crown, and I don't know how that'd work.
Right.
Crown, but of course, of course, you could do that. You said, if you have a tractor, you can set your arms up, set one up, make your crown.
Mike told me they were having them come, Mike told me they were having them come out and do that.
See, we had Dennis, uh, I think it was last year, they came in here, but it was the one, it's different, it's lighter.
Yeah, Dennis said it.
This is twenty-nine thousand for a road grader. But I, hey, I'm not saying it's something should look at. I think it'd be good for the townships. The road grader, that's the next thing, but. But I think it'd be nice, but it's hard to find road grader people.
Yeah.
Y'all have any trouble?
We've been lucky so far, but, yeah, it's a lot, lot of places.
He does a decent job, but what I've seen, I, I think he's a real nice guy, you know?
Yeah, we've been lucky. Of course, our, our grader did it forever, you know, he passed away right as soon as we took office last couple years ago. Yeah, we've been alright, but some places are really struggling to find somebody.
Yeah.
And then to find somebody that's decent. That's how the part.
Yeah, well, everybody knows that, really.
My road grader does a great job.
See, that's what you hear.
Where are you?
Come on pavement.
Uh, Mark, see what you're, you're dealing with?
Uh, boy.
Not all townships are the same.
That is a real truth.
That's why, I was telling him, and he's beginning to learn some of that, and he was also learning that there's not much you can do.
That's the downside of.
Yeah. But the nicest thing we done was out there at CC's when they wanted to do that. Bob got that fixed up, and I think that, that really helped a lot.
Yeah, I was surprised that went as quick as it did.
I guess, I tell you, he was wanting it real bad. Of course, years ago, he had one, and, and he didn't wanna, we put in stuff then, he tore it out. Anyway, and so, this last time, got everybody out there, and he, he stuck that, went ahead. And I think, I think it's gonna work, get rid of the water, and the way it looks, so. Hopefully, but the big thing, it really helped that drive back in there. The bad thing, township only goes the bridge.
Yeah, it's, it's really a pain to go over there, cause you gotta, you know, go down the highway.
That's right. Well, here's a guy.
Here he is.
Don't know nothing.
Well. I'll let you come here and give us some information.
No, I'm just gonna come in and sit like Mark does. Good place to hang out, I guess, for the next two, couple hours.
Oh, we do have Snickers now.
I don't need no, no.
Mark's the one who's, and Scott, Scott got his and run.
That's about like him.
Yeah.
Well, hey, there was a good freeze frame of him the other day grabbing a donut.
Yeah.
That was perfect. I saw that, I'm like, oh, perfect, perfect timing.
He was after that.
Update on Softmax bridges. They sent me an email about two months ago, wanting me to rework the paperwork on Southwest seven oh one, which is the last bridge I submitted. And so I've been working on it and getting ready to send it off to them today, and they sent me an email back and said, never mind, we don't need that paperwork, because that paperwork's in financial, getting approved for credit. Now they're needing the paperwork on the south, or northeast one hundred bridge. It was turned in eight months ago. It was the first bridge I turned in, but, uh, and seven oh one was the last bridge I turned in, so. Anyway, I'm working with Lindsay and the state on the Softmax, trying to get everything cleared up. Because after Julie retired, this new lady, she just, uh, can't keep things straight.
Yeah, she's.
And, uh, so anyway.
It's where Southwest seven oh one is at?
Southwest seven oh one, and it's in, uh. Fair Creek.
And northeast one hundred?
It's in, uh, Bethlehem.
So you said the eighth month one, the one that you turned in eight months ago, they're almost ready to approve that one?
No, the one I turned in two months ago, they're getting ready to approve it. But the one that eight months ago, there wasn't more information on.
Is that the last two?
Last, no, that's the last three. There's no. There's a third one in there that's been submitted, that's in the bridge division, getting approved. So, and that's on Southwest seven hundred in Fairview. So once I get those three done, I'm hoping I can get them settled and out of the way.
Yeah.
Before I have to submit the next one, which is up in Bogard on, uh, fifteen oh one.
And we need to have, we need to get these done.
So, anyway, still working on that nightmare. Do I have to request in writing to go into closed session with the commissioners, or how does that work?
Well, I mean, if you know you're gonna go into closed session within twenty-four hours, you have to put it on the agenda. But if it's something that, uh, it, it's impossible to put a twenty-four hour notice, then, uh, we have the flexibility to go into closed session now, if we need to.
So if I need, if I wanna go into closed session to get clarification on some, uh, employee stuff, then I need to notify you, uh, so you can get it put on Tuesday's agenda.
So you wanna do that?
Do what?
You wanna do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Oh, Mike, why?
Um, what time?
Ten o'clock. After talking with Kelly and Rick and, uh, yesterday and stuff, uh, if I wanna, i- if the guys out there are gonna be doing some oddball jobs, this is the time of year that I need to do oddball jobs. And, um, because at the last meeting, I've overheard that we're gonna have to get some records moved out of the old jail and into a secured location. I went ahead yesterday afternoon, went and purchased the material to build shelves.
Shelves.
In that, uh, container that we keep under lock and key out there. That a way we can get, uh, records and stuff moved, so, um. The guys have got most of one side already built. And then we'll have the other side built this afternoon, and so, we should be able to start moving the records if that's what you guys wanna do at a later date. If you guys decide you don't wanna move them out there, that's fine, cause I can use the shelving for something else. But I'm charging the materials to the courthouse.
Ah, I think that's great. We'll get, cause Rick's and everything, the only one we can't do is, uh, LaCrissius. And we're talking about, since she would want the garage that he used to have, the Ken used to have for evidence, cause they can be locked up separate, and just keep that building, and it'll be fine.
And I'm gonna, uh, check with, uh, the sheriff, Brown, and see if they've emptied out their evidence locker, because if they've emptied out their evidence locker and moved that stuff, cause they, at one time, they was talking about moving it to the jail.
That's right.
Uh, if they've moved that stuff, then we could use that room there to put, uh, LaCrissius stuff in, because they keep it under a separate lock and key that we don't have.
Wonder if it's big enough for LaCrissius? How much room has she got over there?
Huh? She has like.
It's, it's at least half the size of this room.
Oh.
That built, that.
But then she have like four cells over there.
So on that, it's all under lock and key, I don't.
It'll get a lot of it, but, uh.
You gotta keep everything.
I don't have keys up.
Yeah, we don't wanna do that.
No.
I need to visit with her, cause she wants to be a part of, um, the discussion on where her records are.
Okay.
Cause she's gonna need full access, so I'll have to give her a key to the gate.
I'll tell you what.
Key to the building, and a key to the, the room.
Well, that's what the sheriff had. He had, he had a key to the gate, key to the building, and a key to, well, he had the only key into that room.
But if she wanted that down there, it'd probably work out better for him, cause it's already got lights and one key. And she'd go right straight in.
She has commented a couple times, and she definitely wants to.
But you just need to visit with her and decide what she needs on that stuff.
I'll do that.
Otherwise, uh, we've done about eleven hours in Fields Creek, trying to get their roads filled up. Still got about eleven more hours to go before we get them, uh, passable with our car parts laying in the ditches, but, we'll eventually get there. We've got a lot of people all sick and stuff right now, so. Anyway, we're pushing on. I don't think I have anything else for you guys at this time, Mark. Did you like the ride last Tuesday?
Oh, yeah, it was smooth.
He went sleek.
I know better than that. But he didn't grab the old handle of it yet. Jimmy, got anything? Rick, you got anything?
We got the message about the tailgate Friday, tomorrow, down in the basement.
Well, it depends if they're, if they're in a good, if I'm in a good mood or a bad mood. Depends what they do tomorrow morning, if they. Never mind. We'll discuss that Tuesday. So if you guys ain't got anything else for me, I'm outta here.
Alright, thank you.
Could I?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to bludgeon you, I just wanted to ask you a question if I could. On, on Highway eighteen and nine oh one road, no matter when, it's always real rough on that ramp on the north side. It's always real rough coming and going, and I was just wondering if something could be done, like, uh, you know, where it meets a highway? On the, on it going north on nine oh one road?
So the approach to the highway, from the gravel road to the highway.
Yes, uh, in some places you see ramps to the county, or somebody's done it, you know, on the, on the.
It should be low dots.
And I was wondering.
With eighteen, usually, Modot comes down there and does some of them on the approach, but I don't know.
No matter when, i- it's always rough going and coming, and I know sometimes it's.
That, well, I, doesn't Modot have, like, from the edge of their road so far, before we actually pick it up?
Uh, in fact, I used to know it whenever we was doing that down there, to see, down there at CC. I forgot how many feet they go, and I think it's around, it's caught away.
It, uh, it is, cause.
Usually they came out and do that with a blade and tractor.
Okay, uh, I just, I'm gonna say something, I just, you know, it's, it's always, even in the summertime, it's, it's rough getting on and coming off.
Have you talked to your road board? Have you talked to your road board?
No, uh-uh.
I, I honestly would start there, cause they're, they're gonna know.
Okay.
What township are you in?
I'm in, uh, South.
That'd be Walker or Davis?
Davis, Davis. Okay.
I didn't, I'm sorry about.
No, you're fine, you're fine.
But, uh, that, that's Jake Bradley, and he was the south side.
Yeah, he'll be the south side commissioner.
So when is the next road board meeting? It's okay.
I don't know.
Ted Holt's probably.
Ted Holt.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. Alright, thank you all.
Alright. Okay. But that's when they, usually they take, if you see them, every once in a while, going up and down the road, blade.
They're way.
And that's what, uh, CC's, uh, Dennis, then you say they just go out there once a, once a month, and still is, you can't keep.
I know, I know they told us they were way behind, right, right before I left. And we told them if they drop a load of gravel, they pay for the gravel, we didn't saw, Mike, Mike ended up doing. Cause I know at the end of my road, you, there was a bit, I mean, it was that low.
That's a lot happen everywhere, if it's used a lot.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know.
You have people coming off the highway, buying us.
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
Bounces. Well.
That's all I have for you guys today.
Brad, did you want something?
No, I just in the area, I thought I'd stop by and.
Snicker? Do you want a snicker?
Well, I was hoping there was donuts.
Well, there ain't no donuts.
Little sabotaged.
Got a sneaker here.
No, no, it's alright. You all have good ones, I see. It's like you're healing up good. Well, not bad. Yeah, I'm a pretty little star, but. Way down my model career's over, yeah.
What happened?
Loaded the bull, and, uh.
Did the bull not like being loaded?
You know, he's just a gentle old bull, never had a problem with him, and I was kinda shutting the gate behind him, he was halfway up in the trailer, and, uh, got his back leg, and he didn't like that, took the gate out of my hand and put it before it. Never happened before, but, uh.
It, it can happen quick.
A little humble reminder.
Heads up, man.
Why you don't have some teeth or anything like that?
I got pretty damn lucky.
Yeah.
Broke my nose, but it, it didn't even break it bad. It just kept it, kept it right.
Oh, kept it straight. Well, you gotta, you gotta thank the bull for that. He didn't put a kick in it.
Effort, considering, he did alright. He was limping for a couple days, so I kept reminding him of that.
Boy.
I'll see you later.
Alright.
That'd be awful.
Hey, they, well, I tell you what, open this, and then, if it's a swinging gate, you better be ready, and like some of ours, I've had close quarters. I learned that you just better watch it off close, cause boy, them, when they kick, they put a lot of power.
We did curves.
Hey, that's something need to think about, too, and I'm not for sure. One or two of Steve Jones' Murphy John here. Yeah. But then also, we need to go to Great Rivers, too, so, there's two places I know, but, uh, we're doing more stuff with John Deere, but. I tell you what, I think that some of these townships, we might be able to work a deal with.
I think so.
I really.
You know, we almost had to deal with Deer Creek.
That's right. We almost had that done. And they was ready to.
I'd definitely be cheaper.
Oh.
Be a whole lot cheaper.
They was.
And you know they don't use those maintainers very much.
No, they, wait, ten hours, maybe a month. Well, hell, that's the trouble. They don't use one enough.
So they're paying ungodly enough money for the things, they just don't get much use out of it.
Anyway, uh, let's see what happens. We all go to C Camp, but then let's, when we have our, uh, township meeting, and hopefully we can get some people and have somebody be arrested. But with their, all the hubbub with some of these road boards.
Uh, right now.
I wonder.
I'd be able to get one.
I wonder how many of them, well, are actually, have anybody coming up or running against anybody of them? Is there very many?
Uh, Davis and Walker have, have, um, races because of the chaos going out there, um.
I don't know what the others, that, that life been, I don't think.
I don't think there's any other races, but. I don't think there's any other races, but, uh, I, I can look that up for you. I think it's just but for sure Davis, Walker.
But hopefully, with everything goes on, I just can't believe that some of them wouldn't wanna try to work something out.
I would think that they would actually wanna go to that training thing.
Oh, hey.
I mean, I, other than the ego side.
That's what, uh, that's the problem you have with, if you go over there, that's the only thing I've ever had, and every year I'll ask, cause every year I hear the same thing, well, I can't find anybody who run a road grader. Well, we never came kidding anything, but just like there, I just, we'll see what happens. If they'll come out and talk about it. I think it'd be, I think it's good, and just like approaching with the idea of doing something for them for so many years.
Fields Creek, I'll send the race.
Huh?
Fields Creek has a race.
Yeah, they do.
There's three running for a board member and then there'd be a write-in candidate for clerk, I think.
Oh, really?
There was nobody. JD did not refile.
Yeah.
So there'll be a write-in for that and then three running for two spots.
What's Richard?
We'll see, uh He's the treasurer.
Treasurer?
Something will be definite. He didn't have anybody running this too.
He doesn't?
There may be another township too, but I
Okay. Well, we're done.
Making motion to adjourn.
I'll second that. I wish everybody didn't stay adjourned. I'll in favor of say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's the herd. Tuesday, Jake comes, so let's get with him. We need to talk to him about that and we'll talk to him about nine oh one, but Modoc's the one that's, I really, that's the big one.
That's what, if I If I was them, that's what I'd do, is I'd have the road board get with
Well, all he got is called, called Kevin out there and he'll, and he's been real good about trying to get stuff done.
Cat, Mary?